Leading the order, roll call.
Trustee Markwart.
Here.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Takaka. Trustee Cook.
Here.
President Byrne.
Here. Would everybody please stand for a pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America. Okay. Is there a motion to point? Cook. President Protem.
I'd like to nominate Trustee Cook to be President Protem for the duration of the meeting.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Okay. Next item is citizens wishing to address the board. Is there anyone that wants to address the board about something that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay. All right, and nobody has any speaking parts tonight, so next item then is omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through H? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Protem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. No unfinished business, correct? But a bunch of new business. Under new business, number one. Approval and passage of ordinance 2024-084. An ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Lake County Stormwater Management Commission for the CV master plan project phase three. Director Banata.
Yes, so if the board remembers, we've presented on this a couple times. It's budgeted in our capital improvement program to have a village match to the CV ditch improvement project. So what you can see here is to just briefly go over the project. It involves the the stream restoration of the CV between Hazel Time and Lake Charles. We're seeing some significant erosion throughout that, which is leading to sediment deposit in Lake Charles. So the plan, which is currently at about a 60% design level and in for permitting, is to remove a lot of the invasive species through there. Clear out the invasive species, the undesirable trees, and regrade that that stream, similar to it is on the the west side of the road, to the the area upstream, which the village did several years ago. We had been waiting on a a grant to be released from DCEO, the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, to the Stormwater Management Commission. We just got notice that that money has been released to the SMC, and so they are beginning the first stages of getting the agreements in place between the village and the SMC. So the first step, which is before you tonight, is a pre-award IGA, which basically outlines that this is a project that the village is moving forward with in conjunction with the SMC, and they'll use this agreement to then go back to DCEO and release the funds for the project. So I have a. Let me switch to the slide. Excellent. Thank you. Here's a rendering that the consultant put together, looking to the east and on Hazel Time, of what the the final product would ultimately see. To your to your left on the screen is the Hawthorne Melody Park, and then. The, if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions from the board.
Yeah, who's the lead engineers on this?
So right now, the SMC has hired Christopher Burke to do all the engineering and design. They will also hire them to do the final design. Their their contract just got executed by the SMC to carry this through final design, so it's Christopher Burke.
Well, can I ask a question? How much was Mike Warner involved with this at one time?
I am unfamiliar with with Mike Warner.
Well, he used to be the head of, you know, the Stormwater Management.
Yeah, Mayor, I believe Mike retired just before this project was introduced. A lot of the funding for this is coming from the American Rescue Plan Act funding that came through the state, then down to the county and the SMC. Mike, I think, retired maybe a year or two before that.
Yeah, well, I think he's with GAWAL now. And I guess my question is, do we need, do we need somebody to help us out with this whole project? Besides Christopher Burke?
So at this point, I I think everything with the design aspect of the project has been going smoothly. They, the Stormwater Management Commission is the one that's been leading this project up to this point. So they have, with feedback from both the village and the park district, who is also a stakeholder in this project. They they have been leading the the efforts and paying for the design up to this point. Once we get to construction, it will get turned over to the village to be the lead agency from that point. But to date, we we don't see any issues with the way the design and and project is progressing.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions from the board? Then, or is there a motion to approve ordinance 2024-084?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Protem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Second item is approval and passage of ordinance 2024-085. An ordinance amending Chapter 10, Licenses, Permits, and Miscellaneous Business Regulations of the Vernon Hills Village Code relative to hotel licensing and regulations. Director Jennings.
Thank you. As the board will recall, this item came to the committee the whole last month for a discussion. The draft ordinance that was prepared for that meeting is more or less what is in your packet for review and approval tonight. The primary changes that were made were to the implementation plan, which are listed as recitals in the ordinance, not in the text of the amendment itself. So just by way of a brief review of what those those items would be. As directed by the committee of the whole, we've sort of flushed out flushed out the implementation plan to provide a license compliance deadline for the hotels. All four hotels would be required to comply with the new licensing regulations by September 16th. The existing guests who are requesting, one of the exceptions for the criteria listed in the code, would provide their support for that request to the hotel by August 31st. That would give the hotel and the village time to review any requests and make sure that adequate support is provided. There is an exception to the to the implementation plan date of September 16th that would specify that new guests registering after the effective date of the ordinance, which we are projecting to be July 1st, would have to comply with the 28-day limit right off the bat. And then what we've done, and you can see in your packet, are two draft documents. One is a letter to the hotels informing them of the the new regulations and our intention with respect to implementation. And the other is a draft notice that we provided to to the existing guests at the hotels and could be displayed on the front desk for new guests registering. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on this. As I said, the ordinance itself is more or less identical to what was provided to the committee of the whole. Couple of typos have been fixed, but the the content of that ordinance is is similar to the draft. The recitals in the ordinance prior to the code amendment itself are are the the direction from the committee.
Comments or questions from the board? Do current hotel licensees have to be a resident of Lake County? I was just curious about that. Item number five.
Were you looking?
You know, we don't actually have any.
Section 328 license requirement.
We don't actually have any current requirements at all.
What's that?
There are no requirements attached to hotel licensing right now at all, so.
I was just curious, why why do they, why do we decide they need to be a resident of of Lake County? What if they live the north end of Buffalo? I don't know where any of these licenses live currently.
They would either need to be a resident or provide some some manager who would be a resident of Lake County.
But why? Why?
That's a good question. We did borrow a lot of the language from from Gurney, so.
I mean, the the north end of Buffalo Grove is a lot closer than Antioch, so I'm just wondering why.
Yeah, that's something we could take out. I think the idea there probably would be to have a hands-on presence. Someone that can get to the hotel if need be quickly, but you make a good point. We could probably delete that section.
Well, especially with we're so close to the Cook County line.
Right.
Right. Comments, questions? Trustee Schenk?
Yeah, thank you. So you have the 28-day, and then there's the 60-day. Within 60 days, they can't. The ordinance that specifies they can't. So basically, they can't go back and forth, right?
Right, so with the the, I guess the question you're asking is hopping from one to another?
Right, so maximum stay length within any, no longer than 28 days within any 60-day period for any or any hotel authority personnel, a lot of patrons stay at hotel for longer than 28 days, within any 60 days. So we know, it sounds like the clock starts when they would check in, that'd be day one, right? Check out at 28 days, they can't come back to that hotel for a total of 60 days for the first time at check-in, right? So given that we have, and I have had some conversations about this, my personal opinion is you're given a four-day window where they can hop back and forth between hotels. And and if we're trying to deter this, I know this drafted was, language was taken from another municipality. You know, I possibly, a 75-day instead of a 60-day will deter that from just bouncing around from hotel to hotel. If that's truly what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, we we took a look at the the math on that, the 28. If you move from one to another, you would have to involve a third hotel essentially.
Well, there'd be a four-day gap, basically, right? So the question is, can they find a place for four days and then just kind of wait it out somewhere and then come back? Where with a 75, you're talking, you know, two and a half, three-week gap potentially, which is just more of a deterrent. I mean, the whole point of that 60-day is to be a deterrent, right?
Right, I believe, though, the 75 would make it easier to to hop.
Why would that?
Be able to piece together 28-day stays.
Well, and I think the biggest point is it's it's a, it's it's to give hotel operators an opportunity to say no to a resident, to get them out if they've created a problem. Because even with Airbnb.
Oh, I'm.
Even with Airbnb, after 30 days.
No, no, the 28-day I'm fine with. The 28-day I'm fine with, because you need, because you can't have residency after 30 days, because then you get residency, right? Yeah. It's the it's the within 70, the wind, within 60-day, right? So 28 days, totally agree with. But then it says within 60 days, like, how's it written here? For. Any. Sorry.
His point is.
For longer than 28 days within any 60-day period for any hotel. So that 60-day period, first 28 days, then they can, you know.
Then you go to the neighboring hotel.
Which is less than a mile away.
Wait two days, or or you go straight to the neighboring hotel, and then you.
And then go back, then wait four days.
Four days.
Come back to the first hotel.
First one for 28.
Wait another four, where a 75-day creates more of a deterrence from that happening. Now, look, it's a lot of legwork for a person to do that. I got it. But I'm just saying, if we're doing this as to keep, to deter bad elements, it's easier to wait out four days than 15 days, or whatever it would be, so, just my opinion. I mean, if you guys are fine with 60 days, we're fine with 60 days. That's what I know Schaumburg is doing, and they don't seem to have too much issues, as we spoke about. So just something I just want to point out. If somebody really wants to figure it out, they'll figure it out. And the other one I wanted to make a comment on. So at the end of the 90 days, Pat, we were, Chief, we were talking about, the end of the 90-day period, there could be a potential of a larger amount that need to go somewhere. And I think we should try to help mitigate that that one time with, like, having support services like 211 available, Lake County Support Health Department, you know, on hand to help facilitate either placements or opportunities or options.
Yeah, we need to be proactive on that.
I think we should, because you get to that, and and we will know from the hotel where we're at. It's 60 days, 90 days, where we're at with long-term.
After 28 days.
Yeah, but those, but a lot of these people have residents, right? You know, so they have, they have, there's a 90-day window right now, right? Is that correct?
Right.
Going, once it's implemented.
Yeah, we won't know anything, I guess, till the end of August, like, ooh.
You'll kind of start seeing who's staying, who's not, who's going to potentially try to stay, or who's going to need some kind of social service, you know? So I just think to be proactive.
Right.
For to offset any kind of potential. And I think we're all on the same page.
Yeah, we hear you loud and clear. I think police department and building department will work closely together, will communicate closely with the hotels, understand this is the start of the path toward improvement. It's not an overnight fix, it's not even a 90-plus-one-day fix. It's a, it's a pathway. We apply discretion in enforcing ordinances every day in the community, and you trust us with good judgment. We'll continue to use that kind of application.
Do we have a sense of what percentage of the occupancy for any of these hotels is longer term?
We did have a number. It was a, it was in the 50s, I believe.
50%?
It was, it was a pretty large number.
50%?
I think it was something like 54 units. I don't remember.
Between the two hotels, yeah, which is more like 20%.
Okay, 20%.
Aren't they about 120 units per, I think there's about 120 units per per property.
Okay.
It it was a larger number than I would have expected, but I I don't remember the number when we talked with the the management some time ago. But it's not a continuous number either.
And the burden's going to be on the hotel, basically, to monitor their 28 days, 60 days, correct? That's not going to be something we're going to be looking at. That's, the burden's on the hotel.
Okay. Other questions or comments? So are we leaving it at 60, or do we want to change it to 75 days? Yes. Do we give them time now? Yeah, 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 go ahead.
My name's Kathy Braun. I am the district manager for the extended stay. If we could go back to the first slide where they talk about the calls for people who were there 30 days or more, I first would like to say they don't have that information. You guys don't know.
Could you, could you, the mic?
Yeah. The first slide on the calls and the length of stay. There's no way they would have known if they were there for 30 days or more, because only I have that information at the hotel, and they never asked for it. I asked for a list of names so we could see if they were 30-plus stays, and it was redacted. I couldn't tell you if it was or not. I'm not saying we didn't have the calls, we did. We don't call the police for 30-day stays, because you guys don't do anything, we all know that. They are residents, they have a legal right to stay there. So I would love to know where they got those numbers and the information. In regards to the Holiday Inn Express and the Hotel Indigo, if you read what they've written, they don't fall into the category. They do not have refrigerators, nor do they have stoves, nor do they have long-term stays. So basically, they are talking about my hotels. Right now, we have at least 80% of our guests who are residents. So the number of 50 rooms isn't even close. So the number of people that you will be displacing from what they consider their legal home as residents is incredibly high. The cost to my company, and we make multi-millions, I get it, will be over probably $100,000 just to evict. So when we start evicting these people, because they don't have to leave, they know they don't have to leave, they don't care what your ordinance is, they have a legal right to live there. They will get taken to court, we will have to evict, and we will have to incur those costs. When it comes to cameras in the rooms, which is also in the halls, none of the hotels in Vernon Hills have those. And yet, you're putting those on us at a cost of probably $50,000 a hotel. I want those, I'd love to have you guys make me get cameras in my hallways, but doing it this way is not right. And there's a couple of other things. The most important, and I'm sorry I don't have legal representation, because my company is a little bit behind on everything, is infect what you're doing, not that one. This has come from my lawyer, and I believe someplace in your bylaws, it says we're going to self, we're going to tell you, which is what they do in Schaumburg, let me tell you, they don't tell them. So if you think that's how it works, you're wrong. If you look at what Gurney has done, Gurney has written their law to help us, not to hurt us. We basically are eliminated from this type of law. We do work very closely with the place you can walk in the door in Gurney, and I will give you any piece of information you want, whether it is my guest registry, which you don't have a legal right to, without a court order, we'll give it to you. You're looking for somebody, I'll give it to you. We want the hotels to be safe, but these people need a place to live. And I'm sorry, I heard directly from somebody in this room, these people could not live in your town because they can't afford to right now, rents are too low. That's the problem. So that's, in effect, what really is going on. But there is a statute called the takings law. The taking may be, and this is in the Constitution as well, taking may be the actual seizure of property by the government, or the taking may be the form of a regulatory taking, which occurs when the government restricts a person's use of their property to the point of constituting a taking. If you pass this law, my buildings close. We employ probably 35 people between the two of them, they will not have jobs. Now, when it comes to a manager living in the village, I didn't even read that. One lives in Mundeline, I believe that is the case, one lives in Lincolnshire, close enough. But our company really is opposed to this. We would like to work with you and figure out a way, they are safer. But that number of calls, that is not from 30-day guests, that is from other guests. A lot of them are, we do deal with people who have a lot of social issues, whether that's mentally ill, a lot of seniors whose families drop them off, there are no places. You can say, let's work together, there are no places, there's not a lot of places, this is what they've turned to. Am I thrilled that's what my business has become? I'm not, but that is what it's become. We could work together and not have to do any of this. If there is an issue, we could take care of it. We have asked that we get a restriction or a declaratory something to go into court to see if this is even legal, because we don't feel it would be legal. This is housing discrimination, and I get it. We, we've always been an extended stay, 20 years ago when we got licenses, you knew that. You knew we wanted people to stay longer, that's what we're doing. I mean, you can vote how you're going to vote, and we will continue, but we definitely needed to be heard on that. Questions?
Yeah, this sounds like maybe we've got. Just my, yeah.
So, so what kind of calls are being made specifically? I'm just curious.
Yes, sir. So it's a lot to unpack. Let me start with, I think, what I clearly understand. Kathy, and I'm sorry, your last name?
Braun, B-R-A-U-N-D.
Thank you. And we talked on Zoom.
A couple of times.
Yeah, so I I believe the concern is that when we did our review of history and established that the majority of the repeated calls for service are from extended guests. Kathy's concern is that that didn't align with their experience, because they, as explained to me, is have kind of a short tolerance for people that are there for less than 30 days, meaning they ask them to leave quickly if they're problematic guests within that 30 days. So I understood that. We went back and we did provide data, and Andrew sent that, and we did sanitize it. We didn't think it was appropriate to share guests' names, but next to every name, we identified them as person number one, person number two, person number three, and established that over many months, repeated calls with the same person, we were going back to. So we did not share names. We did that out of privacy for the people, but we did share pretty substantial information of.
There was no way to tell if they were 30-plus. And I would add, if you had that information and you would come in 10 times for the same guests, we will evict. And it's very easy to evict in that situation. I mean, it's even here, we will be evicting 150 people. It's going to be six months at minimum in Lake County to evict these people. It's not something that happens overnight.
All all I can tell you is the, we substituted the number for a person's name. That's how come we knew they were the same person, because when we dealt with them, it was the same person multiple times over an extended period of time of months. And all we did was, when we showed that list of all those calls for person number one, we just removed the name for their privacy, so.
So every time I see person number one, that's the same person.
That's the same person.
So you're saying 104 calls were from the same people? And do you know how many times they called? You you were called for 104 times? So we only know the police are called if the police stop by our desk and let us know that somebody's been called. So if if nobody stops, if we don't know what's going on, we wouldn't know that would happen. And again, that would be a communication between us and the police that we obviously don't have, because 104 calls in a four-month period is immense.
Yeah.
And you're saying those were 30-plus guests. So I would have to, I would have to go back down and break through down those numbers.
Well, I think we shared these numbers with you.
You did, but I didn't realize that's how you did it. I saw a completely redacted paper, and it, to me, it made no sense, because you don't have our list. I mean, if you had asked for my 30-day list, I'd be more than happy to give it to you. But again, we weren't consulted for any of that.
Okay.
Yeah, trustee, hang on a second, Roger. Trustee Markwart. In looking at this, I I would probably like to pull this, do the fact of discussion in relations with the hotel and with the village.
That'd be great.
To get a better understanding of things. I know we're going into something, and it's something that will protect you and something that will protect the village. And and working together is by far one of the better things to do.
Absolutely, yeah. And I know that, I know you looked at Schaumburg, but there's so much of this that Schaumburg isn't doing. And again, Schaumburg does not enforce any of it. It is in paper only, they do not get any reports. I can go into my building right now and do exactly what they've done and tell you. I have 124 rooms, and the 89 people there, they are all here for a company. There is no enforcement whatsoever. I am not going to put myself in a position to lie. I will evict all these people, but it's going to get ugly. I mean, it's going to get really ugly for us, for sure. And then we're going to have all these people on the street, and they will be on the street in your town.
Mayor, you had a.
And that's only one building, not two.
Sorry, Mayor, you wanted to say something?
No, not at this point.
Okay.
Do you have in-house security?
We do not. We have somebody on premises all the time, but I have 10 hotels, and I do not feel a need to have in-house security in any of those. If that was something that you wanted, it would be something we would certainly look at.
I mean, wouldn't that be something for them to self-monitor, having in-house security? So then they would know, you know, if they need to call the police, then it's.
And again, any person that has a nuisance like that, we would certainly work to evict. I mean, there are ways to evict. It is usually a six-months process, I don't know if you guys know Lake County, there's an arbitrary, arbitrator.
I get it, I know eviction's not. But I I'm going to agree with with trustee Markwart, this needs to be tabled and for further discussion.
Can I?
I don't think we can just make a snap.
Trustee Schenk?
I agree, sorry, Craig stepped on you there. So something about Schaumburg that I noticed when we were originally talking about this, and I just double-checked it again, that it seems to be that you are, they're ordinance, you're trying to mitigate it. It seems that after 30 days or whatever, it looks about 30 days, you basically triple your rates.
No, our rates go down the longer they stay.
At in Schaumburg only, though, only in Schaumburg. If you look, I can show you.
Our rates, whether new rates, what you have are wrong, our rates are based on a daily stay, a weekly stay.
Sure, I understand. But like, for some reason, Schaumburg has, goes from like a $50 rate, and when you put in plus 30 days, it goes to $150 rate, so.
Oh, yeah, they may have done that to stop that. Now, I will say, the only reason Schaumburg wasn't fought is they're not corporately owned, and the franchise did not choose to fight.
Court, you're corporate here?
We're corporate.
So all Schaumburg is franchised on? All the extended stay Americas, we'll call them?
Yes, they're all franchised. Our company does oversee one, one that we're talking about, but it's a franchise we just helped with.
How many extended stay Americas in Schaumburg?
In Schaumburg, four. In the United States, there's 700 and.
No, that, yeah, that's, but the four in Schaumburg, they're. No, that, yeah, that's, but the four in Schaumburg, they're all franchised? None of them are corporate?
Yes, they're all franchised.
So they're all franchised.
Yeah. And again, it hasn't gone into court to see legality of it. And they will tell you straight out, they did it to stop migrants. That was 100% why they enacted this. They don't care about the 30-day people off the street.
Attorney Farola.
Sure. I understand the board may wanna further talk about this, but a couple of things I'd like to address. When these hotels were zoned, this business use was not contemplated. This was contemplated as an extended stay for business use, and I, I think you've admitted that.
I agree that.
And the business has evolved. This is a zoning issue. This is not, these hotels are not located in a residential zone. They were never meant to be homes. They were meant to be hotels, for limited stays. It's evolved for reasons, due to the economy, the business, whatever has happened. I completely disagree that this is a taking. And we'll talk more about it after this meeting. What this is, this ordinance is a resetting of what these hotel uses were meant to be, not a taking. Not prohibiting the hotels from operating as they were originally zoned to operate.
Well, we were always, we were always extended stay America, so our extended stay was always 30-plus.
I understand. I, I listened. I, I listened. I just want the board to understand that. What's been thrown around takings, in my opinion, does not apply here. And we need a rational basis for this ordinance. And I believe we have that, in the form of our police power to regulate and protect the residents and the property owners surrounding these hotels even. So I, I do think this ordinance is soundly based. Again, we can take the time, can table it, and, and talk further, but I, I did not want some of these points to go unaddressed.
Well, I think, and, and correct me, I think that part of me that agrees with Trustee Markort is that perhaps we can tweak it a bit to make it one that's acceptable to both our police department and the businesses, because the last thing I wanna do is, you know, inflict harm on a business in town, too, so.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, at least give us a chance to relook at it and see if we can, you know, with input from the, from the business, tweak it a bit.
I, absolutely. If, if the board would like Mr. Jennings and I to meet with the management again, I, we've, we've tried to communicate, we're happy to talk through. I'm, I'm certainly happy to substantiate the numbers. I'm, I'm less comfortable providing a document with people's names that could become part of a public document without a thorough understanding of their privacy rights, but I can substantiate for you every number and every call that we've shared with the Village Board. We've done so in a sanitized fashion, but I can substantiate all those numbers. But Mr. Jennings and I are happy to sit down and talk with you. I wanna make sure something is very clear. You've mentioned about the security concerns. The Village Board has heard that. We've expressed that concern. Those are all deferred until there was such time of sale or substantial renovation of the property. So there's a few things I've heard from you that maybe it's worth us sitting down, talking through, carefully looking at the ordinance, and also talk a little bit about the discretion that needs to be applied, so you don't feel like there's a blanket mandatory on one day.
Even with 90 days, and I agree, I would love to do that, I will say, it's not going to be me. I'm a district manager for a hotel. I'm not a lawyer. I mean, I, I'm only here because although we knew about it, this popped up quickly, and it kind of fell on the back burner, and I was asked to come in and represent the hotel. There will be somebody, probably from our legal team, who will sit down.
Yeah, who would be the appropriate person?
And we have to do that, you said the properties around us. I've never heard of a complaint from the properties near us of any kind of damage from any of our guests. And again, anytime the police have a problem with somebody, we would be more than happy to get them out of our hotels on a case-by-case basis. But just telling, like I said, between the two hotels, we're looking at 150 people, 150 rooms, they may have families in those rooms, that you are going to tell them they need to leave by September 16th at the latest. So that, that is really a huge concern. The loss of revenue and the cost to us, it would exceed what we could possibly handle. It would exceed that by far.
Okay, so is there a motion to table ordinance 2024-085?
Motion to table?
Suck it.
Yeah, counsel, do we, just an open-ended table would mean we could bring it back at any time in the future?
It would be improper to designate a date. Leave an open-ended table.
So an open-ended table.
That's correct.
Okay, so there is a motion to table 2024-085, come as a concern?
And I think you probably wanna add 086 as well.
Well, do we have, can we do those together?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Because we hadn't gotten to that yet. Okay, so then it would be, is the motion to table ordinance 2024-085 and 20-2024-086, because they both address the same subject?
Correct.
Yes, table, go.
I have a quick comment.
Wait, yeah, hang on, hang on. So we've got a, got a motion and a second?
Yeah, Craig was-
Suck it.
Okay.
So a quick question. Are you able to tell us how many residents are 90 days plus?
Right now, at one hotel, I believe it's 88, and the other, I believe it was 80. Of those that would fit your criteria, criteria?
Well, that, yeah, that's not really, that wasn't, that wasn't my, I just wanna know, what is your longest-term resident?
Oh, I'll clap my head, I can look it up, maybe, on my phone, but I don't know. We've had people who stay years.
Years?
I don't know about in these hotels, but my other hotels, I have a guy 25 years.
25 years? Residents?
Mm-hmm.
In a hotel? But they're called res, but they're hotel guests?
Well, the state calls them residents.
Why does the state call them residents?
We follow the state law. 30 days, you're a resident. So, and then removing somebody after 30 days becomes an eviction. That is the state law in Illinois.
So the question is, the zoning is the big question here, right? As you mentioned.
It's part of it. Zoning is part of it. Police power is part of it. Crime is part of it.
The zoning wasn't-
Oh, that, that-
All kinds of issues here.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, then we have a motion to table both items. Roll call, please.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Markort.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Protem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries, so.
Thanks.
We'll, we'll work with you on this. Item four, approval and passage of ordinance 2024-087 and ordinance amending ordinance 2002-35, which granted various approvals for 555 Townline Road, Unit 200. Previously, 555B, related to the architectural plans for Harbor Freight Tools. Director Jennings.
There we go. So Harbor Freight is beginning work on the unit as previously Kids' R Us, and then after that, Petco. At Townline Commons, this is adjacent to the former Toys' R Us at the, the far west end. There have been a couple of minor modifications that we can approve administratively over the course of the last 20 years. Neutral paint scheme, refresh, et cetera. In conjunction with the, the ongoing interior renovations, Harbor Freight is requesting a minor change to the appearance. It does not require a public hearing, but it does require the, the board to review and approve a change of this nature. So the image that you see on the screen is the proposed appearance, a branded entry feature and canopy for the proposed Harbor Freight. And we do have a representative here of the, of the business to answer questions and explain the plans for the business.
Hello, board. Matthew Mellon from, representing Harbor Freight Tools. Do you have any questions on the-
What is it?
Harbor Freight Tools. I'm sorry?
Harbor Freight?
What is Harbor Freight?
Harbor Freight is a retail store. You ever heard of Snap-on?
Yeah.
Competitor to Snap-on.
Harbor Freight's huge in tools.
My friend works at Snap.
Okay.
He has a truck with Snap-on.
We'll, we'll put him out of business soon.
Yeah. Because he has a truck.
We actually, so there are Lego trucks. I haven't seen the diecast ones that you're specifically talking about, but we have a special, like, special edition Lego ones that they just released, like, earlier.
It's your Snap.
And you guys are, I mean, huge in the South, right?
There's over 1,600 locations currently throughout the country now.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm actually based in, in California, and we, we built nine alone this year in California.
Yeah.
I don't have many tools, apparently.
Uh, there's, is there, what, there's one local, too, right?
I'm sorry, yeah, there's a few in the area.
Gurney?
Yeah, we've done, uh, Elwood. There's a few in Elwood. There's one in Burbank. There's a few other around this area. I can't remember off the top of my head.
So, so what they're asking, or the, the reason this came before us is because of the canopy, or because of the amount of red?
It's the, it's, there's some of it a judgment call and interpretation of the code. So they've had paint refreshes that are all within sort of a neutral scheme, your beige, similar to the, the colors that were part of the original approval, and just a refresh. This is more of a substantial departure from what was approved back in, I wanna say, 2002. So just out of abundance of caution, I suggested that they come and seek a formal approval from the board for this.
And that represents the national branding that's across all 1,600 stores in the last-
With the red and the blue?
Yes.
Yes, I know the red and-
So I, yeah, I guess the only, I have no problem with that, except the, trying to be consistent, did, did we require Lowes or Menards to minimize the, the branding, so to speak, and the color scheme? And you weren't, you weren't around that?
They were part of the, so the color schemes were part of the approval. So the, the existing color schemes for those stores are part of the appearance approval at the time of construction.
This sign is this big.
So for most Harbor Freight signs, I feel like I've been seeing this one?
That's actually the originals in the stores. Like, that, that branding has not been used in over 10 years.
So, but they could still have, but they just haven't rebranded with this red, then, or?
They rebranded this around, I believe it was eight to 10 years ago.
So all the Harbor Freights have that, no?
Correct. From Minnesota to even California. The only place that we've been denied colors completely was in Arizona, in Peoria, Arizona. We had to modify and use tones there specifically, because every place in Peoria, Arizona is tan.
It's all tan in Arizona.
I don't see a problem.
Yeah. Maybe we let BB Bob have the big orange sign right on 60 there.
Well, this is separate quarter ways, too.
Yeah, this is separate, that's what I mean, that's right on 60.
Yeah. Really? Every place is rebranded right now, that color?
So safety red means stop. Stop coming and check out of us.
What's that?
It means stop coming and check us out.
No, I'm saying like, you're sure, every, around this location, they're all rebranded that color.
Correct. Yeah, we're actually doing a project update in Burbank, over, I'm not sure how far Burbank is from here, but, oh, okay. But we're, we're doing that modification on the exterior. We're in for a review there.
I move to approve.
Oh, good, if he approves them, we're good.
So we've got a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve ordinance 2024-087. Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
It's Trustee Markort.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Protem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries, okay?
Thank you, board.
When are you opening? Should we be planning to open?
I, I think it's July 4th weekend.
Good, very good.
Good, good, thank you.
Thank you all.
Welcome to town.
Thank you.
Next item, item number five, approval and passage of ordinance 2024-088, an ordinance granting a special use permit and certificate of building and use conversion for Time Out, Party and Play to be located at 122 Hawthorne Center, Unit 204. Director Jennings.
Thank you. Time Out, Party and Play was previously in front of the committee of the whole in April, and at that time, the committee recommended approval of a conversion certificate related to a non-retail use within the mall. Part of the direction at that time was to allow staff and the petitioner to work through the planning and zoning review of the special use and bring both items back to the board once the special use had caught up with the conversion certificate. So since that time, that has happened. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on May 21st and, and discussed the proposed special use for Time Out, Party and Play. The conditions of approval for the recommendation, which are in the, the ordinance for your consideration, are a food service permit will be required for the business to sell refreshments. Number two, configuration of the play structures is subject to the review of the Fire Protection District. Number three, business shall require background checks for employees. Number four, petitioner shall ensure that the play equipment is designed to meet an appropriate safety standard and that it is periodically inspected for safety. And number five, the cafe may be added at a later date without requiring an amendment to the special use permit. So with that, Mr. Liu is here again to answer any questions you might have.
How you doing, board? Exxon Alio here for Time Out, Party and Play, just waiting for the final decision here.
How you doing? Any problems?
I have no concern. Questions are kind of, no, we've, we've talked, we talked about this at the committee. Motion to approve? Second. There's a motion to approve ordinance 2024-088. Motion a second, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Markort.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Protem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Item six under new business, approval and passage of resolution 2024-017, a resolution authorizing the adoption and execution of an intergovernmental agreement establishing Lake Consolidated Emergency Communications, also known as LakeCom. Chief Kreese.
Thank you. So we've been here before and I'm just going to take a few minutes of your time to highlight, perhaps for folks that are watching or will watch us later, why we're here. The Vernon Hills and Countryside Fire Protection District run jointly one of many dispatch centers in Lake County. And as a result of the way history has worked throughout Lake County, there's been really a jigsaw puzzle of jurisdictional boundaries for dispatch centers. And making it worse, it's also a, a problem of a jigsaw puzzle between police and fire. And so these, these maps show you where the police and fire jurisdictions. And, and what this really generates is a problem of delaying getting the appropriate police and fire resource to the scene of an emergency. It wasn't as bad of a problem 20-plus years ago when the majority of 911 calls came via landline, but in a day and time when the majority of 911 calls, overwhelming majority of 911 calls come via cellular and bounce off towers and funny things happen, it's really important to keep in mind that people call 911, not just from their house, but from throughout the county. And by designing a system that limits the number of dispatch centers throughout the county, we thereby improve public safety. And so this has been a desire from the state legislature for about 10 years now to push toward consolidation. Vernon Hills has been committed to being part of that work for, in, in earnest for the last seven years, six years of hard work. And we finally got to a point where we've designed something collectively with our partners called LakeCom. And what we envision is a dispatch map that looks like this as early as July of 2025 to improve the ability to, wherever someone calls 911, to pick up the phone and get the right resource to the right location in the shortest amount of time. So we've talked a lot about this in, in, in previous meetings and, and committee of whole meetings, but we're at a point now to present you the actual implementing documents. So with that, I'll turn it over to Village Manager for a little more information.
Thank you, Chief. And as the Chief mentioned, this, this is a 10-year project in the making. There have been a significant amount of hours and people involved in putting this process together. And tonight is a very important action for Vernon Hills and taking that next step to become a founding member of LakeCom. And so what you have this evening are two critical intergovernmental agreements. One that establishes LakeCom as an entity and Vernon Hills' involvement in that. And the second is the establishment of a new joint ETSB in Lake County. So our first item, number six, is resolution 2024-17. This is the founding document for LakeCom, also known as Lake Consolidated Emergency Communications. This document not only establishes Vernon Hills as a founding member, but also establishes the governance and terms of how this new entity is to, to operate. The Lake County Board approved this last week at their meeting on June 11th, and we're expecting in the next few weeks, 21 other agencies in Lake County to also sign on board and become founding members. And we're scheduled to have our first member board meeting as soon as next month in July.
Well, and it was passed very overwhelmingly at the county board.
Correct. Correct, it was.
They were, yeah, so strongly behind it. Yeah, no, I was just going to say, in reading all the documents that are attached to it, compliments to everybody that worked on it because this was a major undertaking. I mean, and that's, you know, that's an understatement. And to get it done as, as well as it appears to have been done, and there's so many, so many different entities involved, this is, this is, it's just, it's a good thing.
So what you have in front of you here, this is a snapshot of the governance structure of LakeCom. It exists of a member board. So each agency that's a member of LakeCom will have a representative that serves on the member board of directors. That member board will appoint a nominating committee that will then nominate seven members to the executive committee, which really meets on more of a month-to-month basis and has the executive director of the agency report directly to them. And then obviously you'll have your LakeCom staff below that. And then on the right-hand side, we have, operating in parallel with this entity is the new joint ETSB of Lake County. And I'll have the Chief just talk a little bit more about that. That is going to be resolution 2024-018 on agenda item number seven.
So we've mentioned there's these parallel paths. It's important as we, this is the largest dispatch consolidation ever in the state of Illinois. And in order to make it a lasting, well-run cooperative with 30, potentially 37 and upwards of more public safety agencies eventually joining, it's important that the revenue or the expense side also aligns. And, and that's administered through a separate law in Illinois, which is run by local joint emergency telephone system boards. And right now, we have numerous emergency telephone system boards. So at the same time of forming a new dispatch center, you're also considering tonight taking action that would eventually dissolve our current JETSB and join us to the new JETSB. And the goal is to make sure that the same jurisdictions that are served by the new dispatch center have the exact same interest, are the same jurisdictions that are receiving the state surcharge revenues, which is many millions of dollars a year and very important to the operational effectiveness of the dispatch center. So it's two separate actions. It's important to note that LakeCom can start running, as Kevin mentioned, as early as next month in, to set their first meeting. The formation of the Jets Board Authority, the new JETSB of Lake County, is actually a little, a little slower process that the board has to establish, has to submit an application, and then the state of Illinois actually will probably have a hearing and consider some instructions and actually approve. And that's when the Jets Board will actually be an entity upon not just the adoption by the jurisdictions, but also by approval of the state agency. And once that's done, then the final step will probably be back before you with a final resolution to consider dissolving our current, because we want to continue to receive surcharge dollars now to apply to our ongoing entity in operation until the new one takes effect.
And then the last item, agenda item number eight, is resolution 2024-19. This simply just designates the, the principal and alternate agents to the LakeCom board. It's myself as Village Manager and Chief Kreese as my alternate. Once the agency is up and running, this can likely be a member of the board. There's going to be quite a number of meetings in the next year as we get this agency up and running, and so it's probably easier for a staff member to do it for now. But as the agency gets up and running, you're probably looking at only maybe one or two board meetings a year. So at that point, it could be more appropriate for an elected official to serve. But we'll, we'll take the legwork, at least for the next year, on behalf of Vernon Hills. And then this just shows a snapshot of who, at this point in time, we are anticipating to execute as founding members to the agency. So as you can see, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of activity in the next few weeks here. And then Chief Kreese will review our, our final steps before, really, that's going to take place over the next year when we, when we go live.
Yeah, it's, it's, there's been a lot of work over these last six to 10 years, a lot of work in the last couple of years. And let me, let me pause for just a minute, and you've heard me say this before, and I've, I've thanked every member of the Lake County Board when I've met them in recent years, because they've demonstrated tremendous leadership in making this improvement countywide. They've stepped up not only financially, but they've made this a mission of their staff. We're, we're joined here tonight by Jim Hawkins, who is the Deputy County Administrator, who has shepherded a lot of this effort and kept all these entities at the table, talking together. It's been a tremendous amount of work. So I really want to personally thank Jim and, as well as the county board, because without, I, I just don't know where we'd be if it hadn't been for that leadership. So I, I know people love to complain about government, but I can tell you at the local level, and certainly in Lake County, it works really, really well. So as Kevin mentioned, we're asking you to appoint the agency of representatives to LakeCom, probably within next month, we'll be back before you to talk again about transitional funding that we've talked about before. We're in, the, LakeCom partners are in discussion with those other communities that are prospective, in a, in a good position to make a loan to LakeCom to cover the transition funding, because we're going to be a legal entity on paper come July with zero income, but a lot of work to do over the next 12 months. And as we transition those members on in 2025, have to have staff, have to have contracts signed, so that transition funding is going to be important. We've also talked about making sure our current telecommunications continue to feel a part of the team, do everything we can to encourage them to want to work for the new entity, make that a smooth transition, and importantly, make sure we continue to serve the residents of Vernon Hills and Libertyville and Countryside during this next 12-month transition. So a lot of work to do. One of the first things that'll happen is a search to hire a new, the first inaugural executive director of this organization. So I know we've thrown a lot at you, but we've talked a lot about this in the past, and we'll, we'll pause there for any questions that any member of the board might have.
Questions from the board? Question for council, can we do this as a, as a three-part omnibus, or should we do them separate? Okay. No, this is.
I see going forward.
Yeah, this is a good thing.
By all means.
Excellent thing going forward, yeah. Okay, then is there a motion to approve resolution 2024-017?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion of second. Comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Mark Bart.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye, motion carries. Is there a motion to approve, for the approval and passage of resolution 2024-018?
So may.
Second.
Motion of second, comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Mark Bart.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye, motion carries. Is there a motion to approve resolution 2024-019?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion of second, comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Mark Bart.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye, motion carries. Good, good to get that off and running.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Man.
Thank you as well.
Okay, communications. Anybody have anything?
Yeah, I do, actually.
Go ahead.
And this is going to Chief Kreese and actually, you know, Jim Barolo. So I've been talking to a lot of people that have told me a lot of really bad stories about what's going on at White Deer Run at night on the golf course. Vandalism, kids riding their bikes on the greens. I've heard a story about dog poop being put in the cups. And I know the golf course, I guess, have you heard anything about vandal, you know, just stuff like that going on? And number one.
Yes, sir. We, we've had several reports of damage, not just to that golf course, but our other golf course and some of the parks. We've had, we've, we've had criminal damage to toilet facilities throughout the community. In fact, we recently organized a communication throughout all of our partners to, to press this message forward. And I, I, I want to just ask John, because he was a big part of the collaborator of that, and I think this would be an appropriate time to highlight what that message has been, and then I'll, happy to address any question that you might have.
Well, actually, I have an idea. Can we institute some sort of fine, a trespassing fine? And I'm talking significant, like $1,000, because if these are kids and some, you know, I've heard, yeah, I've heard kids being walked up to their parents' homes because they were caught doing it, parents aren't doing anything about it. Can we do anything like that? Implement some sort of fine? And, and I'm not just saying, like, you know, second offense. You get one warning.
I mean, we, we have, we have ordinances and laws to enforce. I, I, I always want, you know, let's, it's the certainty of, it's a certainty of being held accountable much more than the severity. So we do need people to call us when they see things. We can't be everywhere at once.
Oh, no, no.
And it can be very easy to avoid on a big property like that. But we certainly would ask residents that live along the golf course or any of the parks, when they see activity after dark, we want them to call 911. They don't have to figure out what's going on. We're happy to come figure that out, but we need the, the public's health, and, and this is part of it. I, I really haven't run into a situation where we don't have the tool we need to take appropriate enforcement action when we learn of the responsible party.
I'm hearing kids jumping on, just in the middle of the course, just playing, and you know what? If they get caught, I mean, whose, whose job is it to enforce a fine? Is it the golf course? Is it us? Can we have something?
I, I would say this, because, well, we own the property, but the golf course lease is the property. We have ordinances, anti-trespass ordinances in place.
Okay.
The golf course would have to be the complaining party to us. And, and then we, we can enforce the ordinance, but they are the, they are the resident.
Do they know this? Because I, I think, someone told me to go talk to the guy that runs it.
They're the tenant.
Because it's getting like, like, someone just told me this morning, I'm like, what? I go, I got a meeting tonight, I'm bringing it up. And I'm talking about enforcing it with fines, absolutely.
Yeah, because the ordinances are in place for anti-trespassing on that property.
With a fine?
I believe.
I'd like a fine attached to it.
Yes.
How much?
We have, we, we have an escalating fine structure, and it depends on which kind of enforcement we take. So we can issue what's called an M site. First of all, we can issue a warning, which we do sometimes.
Of course, I get it.
An M citation is the lowest level of enforcement. Then there's a local ordinance that we can cite someone into branch court. Then there's custodial arrest. And, and, you know, those are all available. It's pretty unusual to get to a custodial arrest on a simple trespass, but if, if there's damage to property, and what people don't understand is, someone thinks they're screwing around, sticking a, you know, a, a flagpole from a green into the ground, they don't realize they're doing thousands of dollars worth of damage to that property. So some of the damage that's been done to the Park District restrooms have cost significant amount of dollars.
Right, so that, that, so that's a good idea then. So forget about the fine, how's about you're paying for the damages?
Sure, restitution can often be ordered as, as a.
Yeah, well, the course would have to press charges, that's fine, but if they catch someone and if they're vandalizing or doing damage, then yes, it's going to the parents and they're going to pay for it.
Yeah. And, but, you know, I need to impress, we need to catch someone first.
I get it.
And so we need the community's help there. When we see something suspicious, we want them to call, we'll investigate that. Unfortunately, many times, we're learning about these things in the morning, the damage is done, the sun comes up and we see the damage.
All right, so as long as we let people make them, we just make, have the golf course make people aware that if anyone, and I don't care how it's communicated, I mean, it's got to be on behalf, you know, Vernon, on White Deer, but it's just, it's got to be known, you do damage and you get caught, you're going to pay, you're, you're responsible for the damages, period. So if we just write that into the ordinance or whatever, then.
Well, I think it's there already.
Then we talk to White Deer.
The ordinance has covered it already, but perhaps signage, that is.
Yeah, signage, absolutely.
Out on the course.
Yes.
Or do you want to bring it to the HOA board to disseminate that to?
So if I can, if I can jump in, so there was a community alert posted on, on Village Social, PD Social, on, on our Cable Access Channel on the website, and was also shared with our partners. So I just want to step back for one second and talk about how much of this began. So this isn't new to this year. Since I was a police officer here, traditionally, as summer begins and school lets out, mischief happens, criminal damage to property is reported. And, and it again has happened this year about a month ago. So I, I want to also say, there, there isn't anything for the community to worry about with like homeless being attacked or people being attacked, or I would say, would I would say crime that affects the, the good nature of this community. But what does happen is juvenile mischief that is very expensive, criminal damage to property, which is expensive. Everything the Chief mentioned is correct, and it's, and it's a, a burden on the resources of the police having to go out and take these calls. And the entities that are affected or impacted include the Park District, White Deer Run, Lake County with their water treatment plant, the Village of Vernon Hills, anywhere that kids go and potentially put bubbles, soap in, fountains, there's going to be a cost to it. So what the partners all did is, we all had a meeting on this, because the Village and the Police Department are the one central place where all this messaging comes, is there was a request for proactive messaging before school gets out to advise parents, this is a problem. It's, it's probably, most likely, kids from our own community, because right now, we, we know it's kids in the White Deer Run area predominantly going on the course. Everything that you mentioned, Trustee Takaoka, about people jumping out there, that the belief from Travis is that it's, you know, families not, not communicating this to their kids, that the course is private property, it's not part of the back, the backyard of the residences there. And there's been a request by Travis that we get this messaging out. The, the HOA, Kevin Borgard has been very complimentary of us in our, our communications platforms, and his request was, I don't want nine messages from all these different entities. So he has to push it out to everybody. He requested if we could all get together and just have one basic message. His, his request was for that message to be created, and it was by our communications consultant, Lynn Brandl. And I hope it's very, very effective in getting out, but the part that, you know, that was message, messaged by you, Trustee Takaoka, is it has to get out to the families and the conversation has to happen within, so the Police Department isn't just taking reports day in and day out. The messaging has to happen at the table of each household, saying, hey, we can't go and create this mischief because there is a cost to the, the greater community.
Well, and perhaps that same message you've got from the Village could be communicated by the homeowners association.
So I believe, it has. So if you look on the top, all, all, all the, all the entities on top were given this message and asked to share it. So I'm, I'm hoping that the people that live in the White Deer Run area are receiving the message via their, their internal communications platforms, whether it's from the White Deer Run HOA. It's been on every, it's been on every platform the Village has, it's been shared with all of our partners. I know the Police Department has shared it, and we're going to continue to message it. And again, I just want to state, there's, there's not a threat to anybody in the community, but it is, it is juveniles going out, my belief, juveniles or people that are out of school going out and taking flags and tee, tee markers, throwing them in ponds. It's a damage to courses and greens, which is very expensive. It's, it's a, as the Park District shares, it's, it's damage to their facilities. It's, it's things that are. , it's damage to their facilities. It's, it's things that affect, you know, just the quality of our life when we say this is our community. And that's the message we're trying to share is this is our, our infrastructure, our community. Have the conversation with, with your kids that, you know, don't allow this to happen. Don't allow it to happen.
So all I'm saying is then, can we just have something in there as well that if you are caught and you are held, if you are caught, you're responsible for paying for the damage?
So I believe, as, as counsel said, that already exists within, within this venue right here, every month, there's a compliance hearing. So if a person is caught, Judge Tonigan will, will, at the recommendation of counsel, cause them, cause the person, the offender, if they're admitting liability or they're found to be the ones responsible, he will impose that, that on them, restitution.
Oh, he will?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And then if, the chief will tell you if it ends up being a felony where it's more than an M ticket, which is municipal citation to bring him into this venue. If it goes anywhere else, the judges in Lake County will also put restitution on that. But, you know, our preference in creating the adjudication system was to keep people right here in the village. So they, they don't have to travel to Waukegan, so they're heard here in their own neighborhood. And I believe Judge Tonigan, you know, listens to the both sides, but understands the position the municipality is in, that, you know, we don't want this damage to be occurring. If you're found responsible, you are going to be held accountable, and restitution will be part of that.
And, and so really, Trustee Takaoka, I, I thank you for bringing this up. Obviously, word is getting around, and that's what we want. We want the community to be aware that this is not just kids being kids. This is real damage with real expenses that we all share. And the best thing people can do is, if they see people on the property, they're not certain that they should be there at all, please call 911. It's a free call. We'll always answer it, and we'll go sort things out. And of course, there's probably times where a kid can be walked home, talked to the parent, and maybe that's enough. There's also times where we charge people with felonies and thousands of dollars of damage is done. So we've got a lot of tools in our toolbox, but the most important tool is really the community being aware that it's a problem, feeling free to call us. They don't have to identify themselves. They can remain anonymous. You should not see people walking around on the cart pass, on the greens, on the fairway, on the golf courses whatsoever at night. If they don't have a cart or a bag of sticks in their hands, they're probably not a golfer. It's, it's not open season to walk the dogs or to go throw frisbee with the dog or have your children play in the bunker that they think is a big sandbox. It's not a sandbox. So please call us if you see anything. Thank you.
That's why they took the rakes out of the sand traps. They put them on the carts now because people are stealing.
Okay. Okay. Any other communications? I had one, on June 8th, I attended the Ms. Vernon Hills Pageant. They do an incredibly good job. Mike did a great job of, of taping and everything like that. And Hilda Kalanowski was the mistress of ceremonies, and she did an amazing job. So are we going to have them what the...
They are. So Karen sends her regrets. I believe her and the co-director were out of town this week, so they've asked if they can be on the first board meeting in July.
July.
So Karen will be bringing in the 2023 Queens to thank them and let them say their last words to the board and the community. And then they'll introduce the 2024 contestants and the Queens.
Yeah. And it was, you know, very, very well done and an excellent afternoon.
I'll pass it on.
Anything else? In that case, is there a motion to adjourn the board and go to committee of the whole?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.
I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting. Is there a motion to appoint Justice Cook, President Pro Tem, and committee of the whole?
So may.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Okay. That motion carries. First item is approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of June 4th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Now, only item on the agenda tonight is discussion of a request to waive the location restrictions for a proposed massage establishment at 1101 South Milwaukee Avenue, Unit 105. Director Jennings?
It's me. Thank you. Mike Rogovi, I hope I've said your name right, is the contract less seen for a vacant unit in Apple Orchard Shopping Center, which is at 1101 South Milwaukee. The request made in front of the committee is for discussion of a waiver of the proximity restrictions listed in the massage license section of the code. Per the business license regulation, specifically the massage section, a massage establishment is prohibited from being located outside of the B1 district. This particular property is zone B1, so that doesn't apply. It's also prohibited from being located within 1,000 feet of an existing massage establishment or a residential property, residentially zoned property, a school, or a place of worship. So that particular requirement, this location would need a waiver in order to, to provide for a massage establishment. There are, I believe I have a, if you look in the graphic, the white text is indicating the residential properties in proximity, clearly within 1,000 feet of the subject property. A portion is unincorporated Lake County, a portion to the west across the street at Georgetown is within Vernon Hills, and the development in Lincolnshire to the south is also residential. I went through the records of similar waiver requests. I could not find very many examples. I did see in 2018, a record of Massage Envy came in front of the committee twice. Request for a waiver in the first instance had a significant reduction in the, the distance to a location with a liquor license as well as residentially zoned property. So it had two, two restrictions. Massage Envy came back a couple of months later and found a location that was almost compliant. It was 296 feet, I think, away from the nearest establishment with a liquor license. In this case, what's being requested is a waiver of the, of the residential proximity. We did make measurements for liquor, which are considered to be door-to-door restrictions, and there is not a liquor license within 300 feet of this unit. So with that, first and foremost, the request for discussion this evening is the, is the waiver requested specifically to this business. Is the committee in favor of granting this waiver? If that's the case, we would come back with a resolution approving a waiver. And then part two of this, in looking at the regulations, we do have, over the course of the last few years, we've had a lot more residential go into locations, creating mixed-use communities. So the likelihood of that proximity restriction being requested, a waiver of that proximity restriction being requested is probably going up with things like the domain locating themselves near commercial property. So part one, first and foremost, for this particular request is, is, is the committee in favor of granting this waiver? And with that, if you'd like to come up and describe the business? Could you provide your name to the committee, please?
My name is Mike. And so, Rogovi. Yeah. So my girlfriend, she has experience, she doing like eight years, the massage. And so we're looking to open, massage is going to be like therapeutic massage. And then we're looking to do more like feet massage, head massage, something they don't have in this area, something like that.
Just to add to the discussion, we've received letters of support for this request from the property owner and the real estate agent for the property. The real estate agent had indicated that they've received inquiries from massage establishments, hookah lounges, and video gaming are the primary types of businesses. This unit has been vacant for some time. The property owner, in his support noted that it's been vacant. He's attempted to market it himself and is supportive of the request. Just to note, one other highlight from Mr. Rogovi's letter is there are, the partition walls separating the rooms as proposed in this business would not go all the way to the ceiling. There are, I believe, other areas that are totally open, but the locations that are closed off, he is proposing to be open from about eight feet up to 12 feet. Anything else you'd like to add about the proposed layout?
I guess, no.
And, and you said all of your, in your letter, you said all of your therapists are state licensed?
State licensed, yeah. So they do like 700 hours, I believe, like the school.
No, it's, the College of Lake County, South Lake Campus has a program in this at their wellness center. Yeah. 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 You can get your certification through, through CLC's South Lake Campus.
How many hours?
I think like 700.
Wow. Yeah, it's a rather extensive program most places.
It's like 8,000, I believe, used to be.
Did you say the other waiver was proximity to another massage?
So the waiver, I couldn't find a lot of examples of it. The Massage Envy was located within proximity to Liquor Barn, and there were some restaurants that also had liquor licenses in there. So massage is restricted from being within 300 feet of an establishment with a liquor license.
Why?
Why?
Why do we have that?
That is, that is part two of the question here.
He's asking why. It's like, well, I mean, I don't, I don't get it, but okay.
So that was part two of this discussion. Is, is there a direction from the committee for us to take a look at, at what types of licensing restrictions are out there, what other towns are doing these days?
So I move in favor of allowing them to come to town.
Yeah, I suck at it.
So do we, do we need a motion tonight on this, or is this just...
I'm looking to spur consensus for us to prepare the resolution of the waiver.
All right. So is there, Trustee Schenk?
Yeah, it's okay.
Trustee, Trustee Markwart?
Good.
Sure.
Okay. Mayor Byrne, anything you want to add?
No, it's fine.
Okay. All right. So there's your consensus, and they'll, they'll put together a resolution and work with you on it, so.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to give your, not for this one? Okay.
Okay. So you said we need a closed session for collective bargaining?
But did you want to, or did, you wanted to get to the second part of the discussion, whether or not we could...
Sorry, go ahead. My bad.
Just essentially, if there's a consensus of the committee for us to bring back some research on what towns are doing these days with massage restrictions, licensing requirements.
Well, this may be a bit of an antiquated type ordinance.
Sounds like it.
From days gone by when...
There have been issues not that long ago, even in Mundaline, there was...
Correct.
Something, so.
And I, and I, no, I think it's just to basically give us, make sure that, make sure that when a place like this comes in, that it is licensed therapists and it is not involving any kind of, you know, right.
Yeah, I think that, that's, that's kind of what I was getting at, is that there are requirements for visibility of the entrance, transparency of the front window, that sort of thing.
Yeah, it allows control, making sure it's a legitimate establishment. Yeah.
Do you have something?
Come back with something.
If you look, I can want to say something.
Yeah, sorry, I'm not a good poker player. I would just recommend it, it, it gives you some authority when you have restrictions that you're allowed to waive on consideration that perhaps there is a future applicant that, that even though you don't envision that being a restriction you want today, maybe it's going to come helpful at some point in the future, so.
Yeah, it's easier to waive a restriction than create one.
Yeah. Thank you. I guess I liked your idea, Andrew, of incorporating into the approval, if you make any changes, that, that it does have the windows and not full walls, private rooms, things like that.
Well, and, and like I said, the College of Lake County's program, they, they even, oh, you can even get an appointment there to work with their, to work with their students. Yeah. Yeah. At, at South Lake. I don't think it's free, but, but it helps. No, I don't think it's free, but it's part of the program at South Lake. They have an incredible wellness program there. Okay.
So we need a motion to...
Well, is there a motion to adjourn committee of the whole and go into closed session for collective bargaining?
So may.
Second.
Motion is second. A roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. We are adjourned, and we will not be conducting business when we come out of the closed session.
Collectively bargain.
Can we go right into that?